And we do have a forum before into Mrs. Nash, so that's good. So you want to take the role?
Sure. Mrs. Andrean. Mrs. Gobright.
Here.
Mrs. Spaulding.
Here.
Mrs. Scobhaughn.
Here.
Mrs. Segley. Mrs. Gaines.
Here.
Mr. Gomes. Mr. Harrop. Mr. Herkenruther. Dr. Jermaine.
She's here.
She's here. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Keims.
Here.
Mrs. Munter.
Here.
Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Riccio. Mr. Rochelle.
Here.
Mrs. Rosa. Mr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Vance.
Here.
Mrs. Westman. Mr. Young.
Here.
Forum, so we're going to start outside, I think we're starting with the easier of the two challenges tonight, we're going to start out with Pell, and then we'll turn it over to OPM.
All right, good evening, everyone. Starting with Pell, following the agenda, our OAC meetings are continuing on Wednesdays. We're continuing to work through the product sample approvals. Right now, the latest being the walk-off mats, the bathroom partitions, countertop laminates, cabinet veneer and edge banding, and stair treads. So those will be approved this Wednesday. And then, the group is also in progress coordinating the furniture requirements for the new addition. We'll be reviewing the furniture floor plan layouts this week, taking a look at the traditional classroom options, a 21st century option, which includes the soft seating, stools, some collaboration tables, kind of the different ideas of today, and a hybrid layout of traditional and the 21st century. Moving down to retro commissioning, the district's control vendor, CTC, is scheduled for this Wednesday to make the scheduling changes that have been identified in the retro commissioning report that was sent a couple weeks ago at this point, and that is for the energy conservation measures. Next item, foundations, the footings and foundations are complete, the backfill's in progress, and when everyone came in, I gave you guys a change order regarding the backfill, which has been approved with the emergency procedures in the change order working group. And the reason for that is the existing fill onsite was not compacting in an efficient manner, reaching the 95% requirement. So, we went around that for about two weeks, Jeremy let us know right away that they were having some issues, we're trying to avoid a change order and said, well, keep working through it, keep working through it, and unfortunately, we came to a point where it's going to start impacting our critical path schedule with the steel. So, we had a change order to bring in structural fill, which meets the Rhode Island Department of Transportation specs to be used as the backfill. So if there's any questions on that, you have the backup on that, we approved it with the emergency change order procedures that we had previously approved. So that really sums that one up. Also, what we're going to do with the existing fill, the excess fill, is we're still evaluating the options, but one option is to put it across the street, on the hill, make that even higher, another option is to put it under the bus loop, raise that elevation a little, and another option is to take it offsite, which would be probably the most expensive option, but we are still reviewing all those options. And there may be another one that comes up, but Jeremy and his design team are looking at all those options right now. Steel delivery is confirmed for November 2nd, although that is weather dependent, because this week, the next couple of days, we have some heavy rain coming, which is going to impact the masonry progress, but Bean will be pushing at the end of this week for some longer days to potentially make up some of that lost ground with the masons. And the next item is the masonry, so masons have been working on the CMU block at the west stair tower, and are moving into the bathroom stack CMU walls this week, and both of those activities are to be completed prior to the steel starting. Schedule update, the latest schedule update we got from Bean was included in your backup this week, some of the highlights, the steel starting November 2nd through the 22nd, the concrete slab on grade, and the second floor elevated slab are scheduled to be complete at the start of December, and the exterior wall framing is to occur through December with the roof install complete in early January. Our budget update was also included in the backup, you'll notice the Van Buren funds of $423,184 has been added at the bottom of the sheet, the owner's contingency remains at $263,497 pending the PCOS that we'll look at today for approval. If all those are approved today, the owner's contingency will be $230,772 with the bus loop and the classroom millwork being funded with the Van Buren funds. So are there any questions on that before I jump into the PCOS? We're not going to have any update from Jeremy today, I think I covered pretty well what's going on onsite.
Kyle, when is the roof going to be on?
It's scheduled to be complete by early January. Let me just get my sheets here.
When will we know the options for the dirt or the soil?
Jeremy?
It's coming. Hi, Jeremy.
It's ongoing, colleagues, but we're managing that move, Garafalo, and we'll report back, but at least a bit, two weeks.
Okay, so by Bean's next one. Perfect. Thank you. And one last, because Gomes asking that, we have as a milestone on our website, the last theme placement, can you let us know when that might be?
Yeah, we're sort of on the crux with the weather the rest of this week, so depending on how that falls out, if the mason is willing to work Saturday, which we've been pushing to kind of make up some of that, we'll be able to forecast that in the next week or two. But at least, you know, at least a week or two for notification for you guys who can play ahead as well.
Are you expecting like November or December time?
Mid-November.
Mid-November.
Expectation.
All right. So we're going to run through the change orders, which are all action items tonight. So Kathy, I think I'll just explain it, and then we'll do a vote after each one, does that make sense? All right, so PCO number three is the obstruction at the sewer. This was an unforeseen condition during the trenching for the sewer tie-in, the site work sub encountered an unmarked drainage lateral which conflicted at the sewer tie-in location. The tie-in was shifted four feet east on the sewer line to avoid the obstruction, which required larger trenching and patching, incurring additional labor and materials. And then, when they did shift over four feet and actually did that digging, they ran into another obstruction, which was at the T heading south, not at the actual tie-in location, where there was an existing drain and water piping that forced the sewer elevation to be raised. So modifications to the sewer manholes and the route from the tie-in point were all impacted in this change order. So the total of this is $14,735, and this work was actually completed because in order to keep the work going, this had to be done. And this was prior to our change order, the working group being formed, this was back in August. So I'll leave it open for a vote.
Remove. Sorry. Remove that we approve it? Second, Brian Russell. Any discussion on? Seeing no discussion, raise your hand if you're a voting member, then you approve. You might keep your kind of yes in power. Let us know when you're done, Kathy. Okay, thank you. Are there any needs on that one? Thank you.
All right. Next one is PCO four, this is for the bus loop, which is funded by the Van Buren Foundation. So I guess, I don't know if there's anything to go over, but the bus loop is going to include all the curbing, the irrigation, the sod at the center, the gates, and all associated drainage. So this total is $343,528.82, and a note on the granite, Jeremy and Bean are still evaluating the sloped granite pricing, as well as any implications flush granite might have. So if there is a reconciliation that has to happen with this granite number we see here, we will make another PCO that'll go behind this one as 4.1, and reconcile any funds that needs to happen.
Do we have a motion to approve number four?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second, Kendra Munter. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. That was about a month ago, we were discussing the cost of that granite, what's the estimated timeframe for that estimate?
So I just keep pushing, JML, the site work subcontract on the sloped granite option. One thing that we've vetted since is on the flush option, we have a sketch from Garafalo that shows regrading of the area, that does not introduce any structures or any other components to the structural, to the storm drainage, so we know that we're in good shape from a drainage, from a grading perspective, there's no change in that regard, so it's just the sloped granite. So I continue to push, and my response that the timeline is imminent.
I also have a question on that. So if we end up putting that extra landfill on the bus loop in the center, will that affect the kind of granite we put in?
No. The two are dependent on each other, not relevant to each other.
So on the inside loop, it's not relevant?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, but the fill would not just go in the grass area, it would raise, you know, you'd put it under the pavement as a whole, you'd raise it evenly across the whole thing.
Yeah, we're still evaluating that, but yeah, it would be the whole entire area.
Got it, okay.
So it wouldn't be like another hump in the middle there, you'd raise everything equally, so it stays the same elevation.
Any other discussion? Okay, is it easier, Kathy, if we do a roll call vote, or do you want to do the hands up?
Hands up and hands down is fine.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, just counting. Okay? All those opposed?
Very good, thank you.
All right, PCO five, this is adding the round windows back into the interior doors of the addition. If you walk through the existing school, you'll see the little, the moon, circle moon windows in the doors, these were removed during design due to budget concerns, so this is simply adding those back into the eight classroom doors and the two resource room doors of the addition, and the total is $2,381.55.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second, Joeva, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay? And those opposed?
Thank you.
All right, PCO six, credit the local electrical permit fees, so this was inadvertently carried by the electrical contractor in their requisition, so we're crediting that back to the owner for $7,000, all the local permit fees were waived.
Do we need to vote on that one? We do.
Yeah.
All right, I'll motion. Motion to vote. Kendra Munter. Number whatever, we're on number six. Second, anybody?
Second.
Sessions by Louisa, any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay? Okay? Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
PCO seven, this is three additional storm chambers to the drainage across the street at the parking lots, this was per Riedem's direction, as it was a requirement for permit approval, so the total for this is $9,168.96, which also includes any associated site work with the additional excavation as well.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Brian, second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion on this one? Joeva?
What was that based on? There's no construction going on over there, right?
Right, this was for the stormwater permit approval, when they review the design and the drawings, Jeremy, chime in if I'm saying any of this wrong, but they required more storm drainage, storage essentially, in order for them to approve our permit to continue the work.
Have we had any problems over there with stormwater across the street?
I'm not sure, but just, it takes into account the whole site, the site as a whole, so there's a unit that's going to be under the bus loop with, I don't know, 30 chambers or something, and the one across the street, I believe, is now at 15. So when they run all their calculations for the whole site.
So this is on the school side? No.
Across the street, on the parking lot side, yep.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Any other discussion on this one? All right, seeing none, take a roll call vote, or can't vote up in the air, all those that approve?
Thank you.
Okay, did anyone oppose to this one? Okay?
Last one, PCO 16, this is adding casework to the eight classrooms on the window wall, which will match what's in the existing school as well. This was identified as an add alternate at bid time, and was actually at $56,000, but Bean was able to tighten up their blocking number, which provided some savings to that $56,000, so this comes in at $53,888.77, which will be funded with Van Buren Foundation funds.
Someone want to make the motion?
So move.
Okay, so move.
Second.
First and second here, Joeva and Brian over here. And so, any discussion on this one? I think, just so everybody knows, this is all the, underneath the windows, there's a shelving that provides a ledge for teachers, but it also provides shelving for all the books, so it's important to get back in. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Anyone opposed?
Kathy, did we do 10.1, or did we do that one already?
We discussed it in the update with the backfilling, but I can certainly run through it.
Oh, we don't vote on that?
Yeah, it wasn't an action item?
Okay.
But PCO 10.1 is the imported gravel fill for backfill for the addition, and the total of that was $13,438.74, which was reviewed last Friday with the change order working group as an emergency approval, under the $20,000 limit, so Jeremy can get the fill onsite immediately, which he did on Friday, and keep that work moving forward so we don't impact this critical path schedule.
So we got to vote on this one?
We don't need to, it's not an action item, it's essentially approved already and signed. So are there any other questions on Pell before we move into Rogers?
Just a quick question on that last one, so that additional fill is the reason for the extra, or the overall?
Yeah, since we brought in fill, now we'll have extra that we aren't using. The original design was to use the onsite fill, and since we imported some fill, I think it's 800 approximately cubic yards, so now we have to take into account the onsite fill that will no longer be used as backfill.
Thank you.
Are we ready to move on then to the next?
I think so. Rogers is at the meet, of the meeting.
Good luck.
Thank you, Jeremy.
This is kind of fun. Okay, so first of all, there's cookies up here for anybody that wants them, because when you get, sometimes when you're getting news, it's good to have, you know, something in your stomach. But basically, we have some really good news, which is that our OPM, they went through the budget and have determined that there's 2.5 million that they can reallocate towards the project, which they had put aside for, and they'll explain that when they get up, but that's the really good news. And then, the next one is Houston, we have a problem, and so, it's a financial issue, and we're going to call this Rogers bump one, bump in the road, right? So, because we're going to solve it, we're going to get through it, but right now, it seems somewhat overwhelming, because we have to make some really difficult choices. And we're here tonight, we're not here to make the choices tonight, we're here just to explore them, got to absorb it, we've been absorbing it for the last week or two, and it's been, you know, it's hard, it's hard to get, you know, to really, to put it all in perspective, so we'll be talking about more options, and we just want everybody's input, and we need you to help us, because the more, you know, heads you put together, you know, the more great ideas we come up with, and one of the, you know, biggest things is, we're going to have to find some alternative funding, because we made a promise to the people of Newport, right, that we were going to do this building, and we were going to do it right, and so, we're committed to that. I know I am Louisa, the superintendent, and so, she's laughing at me, what? But no, this is really a serious issue, so get a cookie.
Want anything, Louisa? They'll know why I'm laughing after they hear this. Well, we just know that, I'm just going to say without the speaker that 78% of the residents voted to get a new Rogers High School, and that's really what we're working for.
It's on a PDF, but I don't know if it's queued up.
All right, good evening, everybody, Joe DeSanti with Downs Construction, glad to see everybody tonight. So... Before I get into the budget discussion, I do want to talk about what Becky just talked about. So a couple things, you know, I've been involved with Newport for almost two years, I think now, it has been a bumpy, challenging process along the way, and we've always overcome all of those challenges. I have a lot of faith that you have an extremely talented professional team that you've selected with SLAM and Gilbane, and your OPM, Downs Construction, that is going to get you through this. You know, I've said it before with Pell, the schematic design is the most important phase of any project. It is when we actually start getting documents, you start physically being able to understand what the building's going to look like, it's no longer conceptual, you could start putting pen to paper and start putting dollars down and understand what really the costs are. So it's important to get it done, and get it done right during this phase, and again, I think the team you have here is going to help you and guide you through this as well. So one of the things I do want to talk about first, before we get into a presentation by SLAM, is the budget. So we developed a control budget back in 2019 that we have continued to update, we originally had submitted in February 2020, I believe it was, the stage two. That budget included, I believe, 106 million for the Rogers High School, which was reduced and approved at 98.8 million due to a justification in square footage. So we adjusted the control budget at that point. We've continued to adjust the control budget as Newport continues to procure and buy out the services. And to Newport's benefit, the last procurement of the professional services, the architect, the OPM resulted in overall savings based on what industry would have typically have said is a amount of money that would be carried in those line items. So we have two line items right now, that we have some cost savings from, that we are making the recommendation to reallocate to a different line item. Those services resulted in about $2.5 million. Since then, we have also identified that, based on this last estimate from Gilbane and SLAM, that there's approximately $4.5 million to $5 million worth of potential hazardous material abatement and demo. We previously had estimated around $2 million, so we're going to make the recommendation to reallocate those dollars to the construction line item, revise your target GMP design to $80,500 from the $77,800,000. So this was included as part of your package, I don't know if anybody had any questions that had time to review it prior to that? Yes, Jamie?
So, when you say that you, like, are recommending that you move two and a half from like the testing inspections and the special consulting, what's, what was that originally like, being planned to be spent on? Sort of, those are, especially the special consulting, that's sort of vague categories.
Yeah, so special consultant would be commissioning agent, special inspections, surveying, those kind of line items, OPM, other services that you may need, in some districts, you need to hire a legal team, potentially because you're doing a purchase of land, it could mean anything. So typically, when you develop your first control budget, that has to go to ride as part of the process of stage one and then stage two, you have to allocate certain dollars to certain line items based on what the industry standards are, or percentage. So you can't have any more than 20% soft cost versus your construction cost on a budget, well, you can, but they just won't reimburse for it, so you always make sure your control budget is less than that 20%. So with the allocation of the $98.8 million, we made some revisions back in the control budget in May of 2020, that mirrored what the industry average would be for a design firm, an architect, an OPM's services, and those kind of things. I know I could speak to our fee, we were very aggressive in our fee, and we gave a very good number, I know that we've negotiated the number with SLAM as well, and their fee was less than what would typically have been paid, so those are savings to the project, and those savings would typically be either moved down to a contingency line item, or reallocated to another line item. And in this case, because we've identified hazardous material now, as opposed to a gas back in 2020, we have a better idea of what it is, that it's going to be closer to 4 million, we would recommend moving it to there.
And is the hazardous material removal, is that in the demolition of the building itself, or like issues with soil?
It's both, but mostly in the demolition of the buildings. Any other questions?
Yes? What was done since the first round of, I guess, for lack of a better term, investigative research into the buildings and the land? What's changed, or how is it that we found out this issue with the hazardous materials after the fact? Did we or did we not pay for services to have that research?
In the stage one and stage two, you typically do not pay for those services, you do, you look at what potentially the school district has on file already, but SLAM has now gone out and hired a consultant to help us be a little bit smarter and understand what really the result of that is, and you have the services of Gilbane now, that are estimating what they are paying right now, currently in the market. Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll hand it over to Kathy and her team from SLAM. And Mark, I guess.
I'm going for the cookies.
Mark's always going for the cookies, you guys will learn that, if you haven't already. So Kathy Ellathorff from SLAM, Mark Rhodes from SLAM, Ted Tolles, you've met last time, and Amy Christmas is probably a new face to many of you, she's our academic programmer planner, and those in the, I'll call it the executive working group, know Amy really well, and she's joining us tonight in case we have questions about programmatic elements that have or have not made their way into different areas of what we're talking about tonight. So it's true, we have some challenges in front of us, they're the same challenges that we've had for a while, but we've put some metrics around them, that I hope you've been able to study in the packets that you got over the weekend, and what we'd like to do is walk through kind of how we got to where we are, where we are, and help you to have a conversation with us and with each other, think of this more as a workshop, yes, it has a presentation to it, but it's really to help you understand where we are, and be able to have dialogue, because we do not expect you to be able to give us any decisions tonight, you know, by the time we get through all this, your heads will probably spin even more than they are now, but hopefully, we'll also be able to start to bring some clarity and help you on your way. So we're, can I move this a little forward, because I can't see anything from, sorry. So we're going to talk about the reconciled budget, so we had both of our cost estimators, an independent cost estimator that was hired by SLAM, and Gilbane's team, everybody did a cost estimate based on a 60% set of drawings, it was 100... It was 197,000 square feet. That was the size of the building at the time that we gave them this package. We have since done a lot of work, which you will see different floor plans now. But we had a point in time where we established what we were planning to do and started putting real dollars to it. So we'll be talking about the reconciliation of that number, those numbers, and then design scenarios that have fallen, not fallen, but have come out of that discussion as we've looked at where our budget for that amount of square footage in a particular type of design was and how we've made some modifications. Do you want to hit the button? Is, I don't know, are you hitting buttons for us? Okay. So you guys have seen this slide before. It's been updated a bit to include the the bump. We were very happy to get the bump up to 80,500,000 dollars as our construction dollars. Your total project budget has not changed, correct, Joe? That this is just the reallocation of the funds a little bit into our bucket, where we we truly appreciate having those. So in the stage two column, that is what was submitted in stage two. And at that point, it was a building of just under 70,000 square feet. And the total dollars that were estimated for construction at that time were just over 84 million, which came to just, what is it, $498 a square foot. Then there was a memorandum of understanding, which is what MOA means, where the information came back from RIDE. There was a little bit of adjustment done to the square footage that was agreed to as the as the magic number. And there was also, as we call it, a little bit of a ride haircut that came through, which you don't see in that line, but that is how you ended up at the 77.8. So the haircut is still in here, it just looks a little different. So the third column is our stage three 60% design documents. That's that package that was given to both teams and was estimated. At that time, we were at our largest square footage of program space and built area at 197,000 square feet, always bought based off of 755 students. But when we did the cost estimating and and the two the two cost estimating teams got together and reconciled their numbers so that they were all talking about it, the same things, we ended up at 118 million dollars or $601 a square foot. We recognized right away that that was going to be problematic. So part of what we're going to talk talk with you about and take you through is how we looked at a way to get that $601 per square foot number down, regardless of how much square footage you build. We came up with metrics on some changes we could make to our design philosophy and some material selections and a couple of methods of construction that would bring us down to a smaller cost per square foot, which would again allow us to maximize those dollars and and use them in the best way we can. Are there any questions on this document before I go any farther? We will talk about these dollars as we move forward. All right.
As a, as a point of clarification, I just want to focus on that middle column for a second. In hindsight, based on the numbers that we had submitted in February of 2020 and then were revised in May of 2020 with the MOA, our target GMP or construction cost, based on the square footage number, probably should have been 82.5 million dollars, based on how RIDE did their justification or revision. When I went back and did an analysis of the finances, if you take the the numbers as submitted versus what was justified and submitted and forwarded back to us for approval, we probably should have went back and clarified that that, in our opinion, construction should be 82.5 million with RIDE.
The stage three number, that includes fields, all that.
That is an all-inclusive number. That includes everything in the program, everything out on the site. It includes the additional practice field and the hammer throw, the track, the field. There was, Tony, there wasn't anything left out of the first one, right? My next slide. There you go, it's all that. And and again, that is our our largest footprint. And I'm going to step away because I can't read the other side. It says what's not included and what is included. So to refresh our memories, what is not included is automotive, cosmetology and central office. They were not included in the stage two and they're not included in that 197,000 square foot piece that you are seeing. And think, there were a few things. So when people ask, how did you get from about 170 to 196? There is some traditionally, there's some program creep that happens as you come out of a stage two and and do some more investigation into a stage three with more in-depth conversations. We also included a few additional items. One of them is that practice, what we sometimes call the practice or the flex field, the hammer throw, because you guys do have a good hammer throw program here. We also had. We recognized that visual arts had not been included in the program. We added that in. And where it says expanded parking, that's actually the small parking lot up to the west that had been, was going to be left in its sort of triangular shape and we were proposing to make it larger. Actually, at this point, we thought we might need to do overnight bus parking. I'm told that that's almost certainly not coming to this site, which which will be helpful to us as well. Are there any questions on this, where we were? If not, we can go to the next slide. So these are the floor plans that represent that 197,000 gross square feet. Four-story tower building off of the the first floor, extended floor plate. It does have the walking track on the second floor of the gym. Again, it was all inclusive and it actually did have a small basement space in the back, which you'll see we have decided not to have a basement moving forward and save that and pull it up. So this is again, just to represent. And when you see that there's. So any questions with this, where we were? So this was a graphic representation to try and help you understand. Again, the first three columns represent the columns that we talked, that we saw on that second slide. The the column itself is gross square feet. The dot at the top is the cost that was associated with that design and that amount of square footage at that time. What we then moved to is the fourth column, which was our 118 million dollar, full 197,000 square feet. At the time that we gave that set of documents over, Mark was still doing all of his noodling in the background. And he had, without affecting the program or any of the things on the site, had been able to get the building down, the footprint down to 191,000 square feet. So that became for us sort of a new metric. And we also worked at, you'll see that there's a new gross square foot at the bottom. That's $530. So when we worked as a team, I believe you all got a VE list that went out with your document package. We we'd worked really hard at coming up with a variety of things that we could look at to modify and sometimes to remove from the overall program that would drive that cost per square foot down, different exterior materials, a whole host of things. So we were able to get down to $530 a square foot. And so the dot that you see at the top of 102 million represents this new cost per square foot, which is a slightly different philosophy on how we would design and build, times that 191 gross square feet. Just keep that sort of as a placeholder in your mind as we move forward.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm being a little bit.
No, please.
I'm just struggling and you'll probably be able to lay it out for me. But I still don't really track like how we got, how we ballooned from 165 to 197. I mean, I recognize, you know, the visual arts was added. But if you could kind of just make that more clear, because I imagine it's like a lot of little things.
It is a lot of little things. It is a lot of little things and it's one bigger thing, which was we added the walking track. The walking track had not been in the stage two and that's about 6,000 square feet. So that's a big chunk right there. But as Amy worked with with your constituents talking more about program, they were, I'll say, right sizing a variety of the spaces. Most likely, a little bit of wish list crept back in there and we're pulling some of those things back out as we move forward. But it was really to take the information that we had, the two visual arts programs that somehow fell out of the boat, we brought them back in. Amy, were there any particular other things you can think of that would help them understand?
Those were the big ticket items. But it 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 really is a change from a conceptual program more to a metric-driven program. So I accounted for every single title of and position of personnel that would be in the building, making sure that they were provided the right, either the private office or private conversations or the workstation. We applied the appropriate network proceed in every single instructional space, whether it is a computer lab, a visual arts studio, a regular classroom or special ed environment. So those were all sort of scrubbed through.
Can you hear her? Does she need to come up?
No, that room microphone, I'm just, I'm turning that up.
Oh, thank you.
Is that something that we should have done more in-depth earlier in the program? Or is it just something that we should have expected based on how these things typically go? You know, it's just 30,000 is a big difference. And I'm wondering if we, if there was something that we should have done that we didn't do or what what we missed.
Very good question, Jamie. I I think from the first question you asked, you hit the the biggest question of the whole square footage. So all of those were done in advance. In stage one, if I go back and look at some of the analysis, there was some programming done. There was a square footage of, I think at 1.240,000 square foot building, based on what Studio J thought was the initial programming needs or desire of the the district. That got reduced down again to, you know, the wish list got down a little bit more and also size restrictions. Part of the issue that we're not talking about is there is a RIDE guideline. They will only reimburse X number of square footage per child. You have 755 students. You multiply that times the guideline, that gives you a building of less than 165,000 square feet. During the stage two process, RIDE actually increased the square footage per child because we were integrating the two programs together. CTU is going to work with the regular comprehensive school, right? So if you looked at this at a at a pure square footage per student, the the size of the building probably is going to be closer to 145, 146, if we went back and did the math. So yeah, that's part of the problem is we have right now is the restriction, the amount of student population you have and where that gets you to a reimbursable square footage amount from RIDE versus what your potential programming needs are.
I want to also add that, just so you know, that we started out a much higher number. Through Amy's work, I mean, it was many, many, many meetings with the principal to get it down. And finally, at 197, we just said, we don't know what else we can do. Like, because because we also a very needy community. Like, we have a lot of ELL needs, special ed needs, we have, you know, ALP program. So it was, it was a challenge to get it down that far.
Yeah, I mean, my question is less, like, I wasn't, my question is less like, oh, 197 is way too big, 191 is way too big. It's more, that's a big gap between where we went in stage two and where we are now. And, you know, how did we get there? And should we have, should we have submitted or should we have been planning from the beginning with a larger number?
Yeah, and and based on the previous information we received, that exercise happened and got down to a number. And and it was submitted for a larger number and was reduced down based on what RIDE reimbursement is. So as part of the process, as we developed the RFPs for the architect and for the CM, we asked the architect to revalidate the program. So the process that you talk about that Amy went through and the rest of the SLAM went through is exactly what we asked them to do, is please go through, first of all, COVID happened, right? So a lot of things happened in a year and a half as well. So things changed. And so we wanted someone to revalidate the program and make sure it was consistent. And during that process is when SLAM had determined that, you know, this is really what we rather have this, we'd rather have that. And what we're trying to do is figure out what's the most building we could build for Newport within the constraints of the dollars we have right now.
All right, so this is, just at the angle right, I can't quite read. So this is our first step into kind of how we got to where we currently are. Am I allowed to carry this around so I can go read? Or will that? No? I have to move out so I. Is this good? Am I good? Okay, I can read better from up. Sorry about that. So this is starting to talk about how we made the cost adjustments over, the global cost adjustments to get to that $530 per square foot number. So if you look at the top where we have, I really can't read from here.
Yeah, you can take it off the stage.
Can I? I'm sorry, I really can't read. Do you? Yes. Usually we're doing tag team and one can read and the other can.
Can that whole screen come forward? It's on wheels.
It's more the angle for me. I want you guys to be, make sure you can see.
We can't read it back here.
We can't read it either? There you go. Is this going to mess up your whole?
Thank you for this. All right. Thanks, Mark. All right, so our target program, we're going to use our target program at the 191 because we are very confident that we can deliver all the things that you need in your program at 191 instead of 197. So take 197 right out of your head as a as a magic number and keep 191. So in this scheme, the construction costs were 102 million dollars and our budget was 80.5. So we currently have a deficit or a delta, rather, of 21.5 million dollars. So our 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 task right now is to figure out, how do we, how do we figure out what we can do with that delta? The steps, some of the steps that we took to get down to the, instead of where it says 118 million, it really should say 530 gross square feet, dollars per gross, dollars per square foot. So some of the big picture things that we looked at and think back to that bigger plan that you've seen before, where we had an interior courtyard, we said, okay, we'll do a scheme without a courtyard because then we don't have to pay for all the glass and glazing that goes around the inside of that courtyard. We'll find a way to do other things. We, Mark came up with a way to remove one entire structural bay of the tower without affecting your program. So he was able to look at, study it and find a way to condense essentially the bar, the 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 tower bar. So it all became a little shorter. We did say, what if we removed the walking track in the gym? So that that did get set to the side. We also said, what if we removed the track and field, the the track and the field out in the back, and made it an alternate? And when I say removed, also for the walking track, we would make it an alternate. So it could be designed, it could be priced, depending upon what happens on bid day. Tony's hoping that, and is Paul, that we're going to have, you know, a lot of smiling faces on bid day and that you'll be able to buy some alternates back in. So these things could be set aside as alternates. Another one was to reduce that parking field to keep it, perhaps we keep it more of its triangular existing shape. We currently have designed two elevators. We said, okay, we'll live with one, not not unheard of. Mark studied the exterior materials and and will continue to study them as we go forward and make some different decisions. Doesn't mean it looks tremendously different, but it's just different products used on the outside of the building. We also looked at modifying the HVAC system to a system that doesn't have full air conditioning but has dehumidification. Those of you who have seen and walked through the new East Providence High School, I think that was ribbon cutting day today, our opening day, they have a dehumidification system as opposed to a full-blown air conditioning system. It is less expensive and it's actually more environmentally friendly. So we made that as one of our items. And then Mark said he would think about changing some of the roof forms to something a little simpler in design. So perhaps that barrel vault isn't as barrel vaulted. But he will take that as a charge architecturally as we move forward. So those were the things that took us from 601 dollars a square foot to 530. And remembering, remembering again, that automotive, cosmetology. And remembering, remembering again that automotive, cosmetology and central office are not part of that mix. Any questions about that? Yes?
Modified exterior material, how's that affect maintenance, lifespan?
We still owe you a 50-year building. So any decision that I get to make on the exterior with you all will be based on a 50-year building. So that doesn't change.
Thank you.
So we'll go to the next slide, please. So we thought it was important to talk a little bit about some of the pressures, the cost pressures that we're, that we're dealing with, that we're bringing forward for discussion. That, so the first one with the building expansion, we've talked about that a bit already, that the, from programming from a concept to reality, the hard work that Amy has done. There's been a demographic shift. Some of that had to do with COVID, some of that had to do with some other things. And then we also recognized that visual arts had not been in the program and that central office, we kind of made a swap of those and, and set, that was a decision with the leadership group as something that could be set aside to be provided elsewhere. I think we've talked before about how complex this site is. We have done additional investigation and we will be doing more. We've identified additional subsurface conditions that are going to be a little more costly than, than was anticipated in stage two. And we are taking them into account and they are in that, the dollars that we've been talking about. So we have incorporated those extra costs, including the possibility of disposal cost premiums. We've made some assumptions based on the additional information that we have. And then we, we've, we also had those couple of things that increased that we, that we had put into the original site plan that we had hoped to be able to get, the, the couple of fields that we, and the parking. The other pressure that's really, you are living at Pell is COVID escalation. And we're seeing an escalation in the pricing between 18 and 24% depending upon which particular piece of the project you dive into, the, the amounts of the effect are larger or smaller. But it's certainly been significant and unfortunately, it isn't something that we have a mitigation strategy for because we can't undo it. Out of our control. Any questions? All right. All right. So now we get into the scenarios. So we have, we have had many, 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 many scenarios. Even today, we had scenario, you know, B point 1A and B point 2B. So we've tried to stay at a, at a, sort of a larger level where we're going to talk about what can we do with the monies that we have. One item or one option, rather, is to build everything new. What if we built as much as we could, new construction and all, everything else was, was demolished? So your site plan looks a lot like the site plan that we had shown, but with a smaller building footprint on it. So with our 80.5 million dollars, we can build, we're proposing we can build almost 152,000 square feet. And so that would give us, that would, that would use up all of our money. In order to do, if we do that, there are program elements that clearly don't fit into that building. Another 39, almost 40,000 square feet. This building just happens to be about that size. It just happened to work out that way. We didn't do it on purpose, but that will play into our next steps. So in this scheme, we would propose some alternates, some ad alternates that we would design and would be bid. The, the track and field, the hammer throw and the practice field, the walking track in the gym. And then we can talk about some possible expansions or additions to the building that we would need to continue talking about what would be appropriate to help alleviate this program deficit that this project, that this particular scenario presents to you. The pros, well, this amount of it would be on budget and it would be all new. But the cons is that you have that significant program deficit that is not housed anywhere. Are there questions about this one?
Do we have, I mean, has there been any analysis on what programs?
We have, and we have some floor plans coming up where we want to talk to you about our sort of first pass on what we think that 30, that 39.5,000 square feet might represent. Like, what are the things Amy and Ted and I spent a lot of time today trying to give you some examples of what those items might be? Because it, certainly it's your choice as we move forward, how we might sort of play a shell game with different options of what comes and goes. Yes?
Does, does RIDE have an issue with, hey, we'll just build what we can size-wise and come back to you five, 10 years later? I know we're doing that with Pell. There was some different circumstances there. But is there an issue with them, with us doing that? And then them saying, well, it's almost like you didn't kind of tell us what you really wanted and really fight for it at the time? I, I just feel like there can be some perception of some shenanigans going on there.
Yeah, I could tell you for a fact that we have kept RIDE informed about what's going on. We would not move forward with any different scenario without engaging in a very specific conversation in a meeting with them to bring them in and talk about whatever scenario we're looking at and why we're doing it.
The square footage, does that, how does that relate to the number of students that we're planning to serve? Is that, is there a reduction there?
No. No, it'll be the 755.
No, and there'll be a little bit more clarity when we look at the floor plans as far as what could be contained in that building and what could, could, would have to be set aside.
I have a question that might need to be held off slightly, but, you know, looking at the different options that you guys are presenting today, and I understand why, but, you know, you're presenting to them, you're presenting them all at a pretty high level. Is there a way that we can kind of get more in the weeds of the construction costs to understand, like, if there are other areas within the construction costs, whether it's... I, I don't know, obviously, I'm kind of just spitballing, but like other areas within the construction cost that we can be cutting back that would allow for additional square footage?
Like landscape being, bringing old furniture over for a while, any of those items?
Yeah, and that would be, and the first answer to your question is, we've done a lot of that already. So as a team, we've all worked together to, to kind of get into the details of what is costly and what is not. You know, Kathy had pointed out that some of the site work is going to be more costly than we thought. We're looking at different methods to reduce that cost as well. Anything we reduce in the site goes back into the building. So that's, that's basically the direction we've given the design and the construction manager is whatever we could reduce goes right back into the building, increase, continue to increase the size of the building. And that's, that's the goal right now. But to answer your question a little bit differently, too, I want to go back and talk about alternates. So if everybody doesn't understand what an alternate is, is SLAM would design it completely in the documents. Gilbane would bid that out and we would have a hard number to know what the cost is. Gilbane would tell us, we need an answer on the fields by September of 2022. And we would have to decide at that point. We also have $5 million in contingency that we are holding to the side, that we could at any point during the project decide to release some of those contingency dollars. We certainly wouldn't advocate for that right now because we need to be more conservative and hold on to those dollars until we understand a little bit more. But as we go through the process, if we need to do some planning, we can do that. And the ad alternates is actually a really good way of controlling, getting a project out to bid, and then truly understanding what those bid numbers are at the time. Because the market certainly, as it's changed over the last year, could flatten out again, which we're starting to see some signs of it. But until we see some real, truly signs of it, we can't, we can't be here telling you any different except for taking a very conservative approach that potentially these escalations are going to continue.
I know that we're expecting to vote properly in the next meeting or, you know, somewhat in the near future, not, not today. But I'm just, where I am tripping up and I may need to spend more time with the backup and maybe need to have one of you kind of talk me through it. But where I'm tripping up is I just, I don't know that I feel that I have a full understanding of what we would be cutting if we would, really any of these scenarios.
So, but again, we'll sort of get there, probably not as much detail as you'd like, but if we go, if we go through the explanation of these, we'll get to the slides. We've put more notes on it than you had because we did a little more work today on the three floor plans that were included.
But, but to answer Jamie's question, so in the, in the near future, this committee does have to make a decision to move forward on a design or at least start, start reducing it from three options to two and say, this is the direction we want to go in because there's a schedule to maintain that we have to keep our professionals on, on track with.
I'm just going to say that, you know, what we have asked in what SLAM's contract is, is to design something that we can afford, okay? Within 10%. And so they're telling us this is what they can, we can afford, which does not fit our program, which is a problem, just so. So those are things that we're having to try to address here so everybody's aware of it. And then they've come up with a couple other ideas and then we have to figure out what, how to go forward.
Yeah, and with the co-chair's blessings, we certainly could set up separate working meetings with any individual that wants to talk more about the details or look at anything else separately.
Is this scenario 1B? Can we go to the next one? All right. So this is a new building and reusing this NACTEC building exactly the way it is. We would not do work to this building, but we would make use of the space that it already has. So you'll see that the new construction dollars go up a tiny bit. And you're going to wonder why, and the, and the new construction square foot. It's because we don't have to spend the money to rip this building down and improve the site. So it's just shy of a million dollars worth of work to do that. So we took that million dollars and pushed it forward into the, the new construction dollars. So instead of 151 plus 1,000 square feet, it's 153, almost 154. So that is the reason for that number to change. And you'll see that the, the demo and abatement number, if you refer to the two, that's where the change is seen in the rest of the, of the math to keep us on 80.5. So in this building, if we were to keep this space, we need, we, we again, with our ad alternates, we would look at adding some design work to this building to make changes or improvements or whatever it is that we come up with as ad alternates that would encompass improvements to this building. Again, the track and field, the hammer throw and the walking track are still available for us to use as, as ad alternates. On the pro side, we do, we do maximize the square footage that we can build and maintain, I'll say. We do still have a bit of a deficit. So in this building, because the automotive is still here and cosmetology is still here, we wouldn't be able to move other programs that are in our program into those spaces because we don't have the money to, to move them out and redo that space for a different purpose. So that's, that's part of where that deficit of square foot, the 12,000 is coming from. Are there any questions on this?
Sorry. So there's 12,300 square feet that we ideally would not, that we would want to have that we don't have.
Yes. So if you, if you work off of that magic 191,000 square feet again, some of the space that's here is encumbered with things that aren't on that program list, so.
So do we know, again, same question, do we know which?
We will. And it's still a little up for grabs, but we, we did come up with a, a list of some things that we think fit that metric. Yes.
Let's make it back here. So this says, it does include cosmetology and automotive but not central office. Isn't that all this building now?
No. We're in, we're in the high school.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
We moved out because of expanded programs.
This is probably a joke. How does this affect our newer and fewer, our money from the state that we promised all of our voters that we would try to get?
It, it will not affect it. We've already had some preliminary discussions with RIDE about either leaving this building. At one point, we're talking about leaving the auditorium as well. And if, and if it did affect the bonus and incentive, they've already given us a commitment. They'll help us offset those percentages with some other potential bonus or incentive program that we get into. So we, we've had those discussions already. And that's what I said, is there, whatever we do, we are continuing to keep them engaged in the conversations because we do not want to go down a path without having the full understanding of what reimbursement might get affected or how they'll envision it when the drawings do get to them.
How old is this building again?
How old is the building?
1960s.
Yeah, there's, there's an addition. So there's an original component and then there's an addition.
60s and 70s. Yes.
What you said about colored irons, that would remain here?
So culinary arts. That's our sort of, that one kept tripping us up as we were coming up with what you'll see in a few minutes is what might or might not fit into this building. And in Mark's current design, culinary arts gets a new home in the new building. But when you leave this building here and the culinary arts new build would be bigger than the existing, by program, it's smaller than we would like it to be. But if it were to stay here and you were to use it in its current form or do some minor renovations to it that we'll talk about in the next scheme, that's one of the things that we've not had any conversations about. And our first pass would be that you would want to improve it by putting it in the new build. So that is currently where it is in all of these scenarios, is it is in the new build.
This space could be used with something else, right?
Yes. Yes.
So a way to think, one way to think about this, if you tear it down, you never have access to it. It's gone forever. Even in its current state, it has useful life left. We'll talk about some other things in the next scenario, but this might be, or something like this, an important key to being able to get as much program area for your students. So COVID has stepped in, as we kind of talked about, some of the cost pressures, they're real. I'm seeing another 25% in other projects in Springfield. So it's, it's a complicated time to be pricing a project.
Any other questions? If not, we'll take you to scenario 2B, which adds one more layer of complication, but more options. All right. So 2B. So in this one, what we are trying to demonstrate is what are the range of costs and opportunities if you were to have, I'll say have additional funds because it would be clearly beyond the funds that we have now, to do improvements to this building? And in this scenario, we're working off that magic 191,000 square feet. We have a new build of 151,000 and we've got about 40,000 square feet in this building that we need to do some work on. There's a range because we haven't studied yet what we would do here. There's, there's a range of, of the amount of money that we would need to renovate all of it. Somewhere between 12 and 15 million dollars in conversations with Gilbane is where we feel a renovation that was substantial and did some work to the outside of the building, did, did a lot of work to the inside of the building. But it does require additional funding from whatever sources you might be able to, to come up with. So we're kind of back to the same, to the same old story, but this would be us looking more particularly at what the improvements would be that we would, again, draw, it could be as an, as ad alternates or as an ad alternate if you were to tell us to do the entire building to its fullest potential within, within the, the money that we have allocated here. Yes.
So on your scenario B1, it's retain NACTEC with no renovations, but you're, in that scenario, you were telling us that the culinary arts would head over to the new build.
It would.
If that's the case, then it would, you, it would absolutely automatically require that space to be changed somewhere. We have a kitchen.
Nope. We have no money to do that.
But that's my point.
So, yeah. Yeah.
So now you have a space which, if you want to use it for something else, you'd have to put money into it.
So that's why we have that 12, almost 13,000 square foot deficit in our, what we're saying, program. We can't push all the program in because we've got some existing conditions that we can't, we don't have money to spend on to change. So we wouldn't be able to change the culinary arts area. We wouldn't be able to change cosmetology or automotive. Now, you may decide to keep those programs intact and keep them going, those two, but you'd have to be giving up something else that you weren't able to do with that square footage that's unavailable to you, lost, whatever the right words are.
And I think what, we would handle that by an alternate, right? So we would design that space to be used for something else as an alternate potentially because we had that on that list for B1, B point one in particular, that there would be alternates to cover some of the things that might need to happen if you choose to move culinary out. You may choose not to.
So would the alternates be broken into pieces because of the spaces?
Yeah, that's what we'll need to work out with you is, yeah, what you're comfortable telling us to, you know, do, either in chunks or, we'd have to work that out as we move forward.
So earlier you said something about RIDE adding in some reimbursement because integrating the programs into the one building?
Yeah, there is a bonus and incentive that we asked for, and that's newer and fewer. Yeah. Yes.
We're getting close to actually looking at floor plans, but, yes.
So the second one, I just want clarification for everyone. The B2, that renovation, that's for the outside and the inside of the building?
That would give some, yes, some refresh to the outside of the building. We'd look at if we need to improve the roof. Yes, there would be some money for the outside as well.
So the entire skin for the outside would be addressed?
Yes.
All right. And what about the inside for B2?
If we were to go, let's say, to the 15 million, the fullest extent of what we're proposing, we would reconfigure the inside of the building.
All right. So going back to B1.
Yes.
B1, cosmetology and automotive are here, and they're in this plan with no renovation or nothing done to the outside skin.
Correct. This building would just stay exactly as it is.
All right. What if you didn't touch those two programs and left them in the building? That's what's confusing me.
Well, we wouldn't touch them, and we would leave them in the building.
No. B2, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, in B2.
And you didn't do a, I'll call it a full makeover, you just.
So you're going to run out of square footage. You're going to be short the square footage of the automotive area and the cosmetology area to use it for your current program. So there would be, you could keep them, you could, but you would have to, you'd have to take something else out of the program and set it aside because the square footage of area is the square footage of area.
Those two programs represent about 10,000 square.
About 10,000 square feet, Amy? Gross square feet? Let me gross them up.
Total combined.
Total combined, yeah, she's, she's got her program open over there. So you could keep them, and you could keep using them, but you, now you're not working at 100, not working off our full 191,000 square foot program, it's 181,000 square feet, which means 10,000 of something on that list is not being incorporated. It's a choice. We're going to get to the point where we have choices. The choices are going to take us into different money categories.
So I'm just kind of going to be thinking out loud as I form this question, so I apologize. But I'm looking at the cost if we were renovating NACTEC, which would put us in the same scenario of not having a space for central office, cosmetology, or auto. That's like an additional 15 to what we, is like what we can afford within our budget. But the, to have what was planned, like, or what was like the ideal scenario of 191,000 square feet is 102 million, so it's like, you know, about 20 million more.
It does not include those three spaces or programs.
Yeah, it doesn't include those three. So I guess I kind of have the question of, and maybe, let me just sit it out, I kind of have the question of why isn't 191,000 square feet presented as an option, or is it just kind of a unspoken option because it's already been some plan?
Well, yeah. Because we can never go to RIDE without the funding model being known. So we can't go with 191,000 gross square feet of new building because that would be above that 80.5 that Joe talked about for construction.
So really, B2 is the same as B1, just with the add alternative?
Add alternative, alternative funding if it's available through experience or some, who knows, but.
But what you would go to RIDE up with would really be?
It would have to be, it couldn't be that number without some level of proof of that funding. It got bigger, the number got bigger.
There we go.
So when we submit the next set of documents, the schematic designs to RIDE, that this body will approve for submission, it has to go with an estimate that meets the target at this point. So could we go with a project that is more than 80 million, 500,000? Yes, but we have to show how we're paying for that. Are we going to, does that mean we're deleting all the furniture, all the technology, depleting our contingency? And we'll certainly get questioned on that. Is that really the smart thing to do, they're going to say? And if they ask me, I'm going to have to say no, right? I mean, we need to have those buckets of money unless we've identified other funding at this point. So we have to have a project that aligns with the budget, that gets submitted with an estimate that meets those as well.
What kind of question, I'm sorry, I just want to recall, like, you know, if you go to RIDE and say, hey, this is the plan that we're doing, and we're deficient in all this square footage, and we're deficient in these programs, I mean, I assume there aren't like that either.
They're not. And what will happen is we define which one of these or two of these that we start moving forward with is we're going to sit with RIDE and go through that and say, here's, we understand the COVID escalation is a problem, plus our programming wasn't quite right, we want to go and sit with them and explain to them. And they might help us with figuring it out. You know, Dr. De Silva and that group is very good and do a lot of buildings, and we've been in a position with them in the past where they'll look at the documents and say, well, take this out, take this out, and you just reduced your square footage. So they'll be very creative in helping us as well. So like I said, they are a partner, they will be part of the solution to this as well.
I just want to say that, you know, we've been working to try to reduce the cost, reduce the size, we're still trying to reduce the size, but we're also trying to, again, as we said, look for other funding sources. Part of the problem, which you see on there, is a COVID escalation of 18 to 24%, and there is ARC money and ESRA money and all this, and we're, you know, we went to East Providence today to see what they could build for their money pre-COVID and so on. So there's a bunch of different pathways, and so some of it is, and you're going to see in a minute, is some of the time changes that are going to come about to try to solve this problem because it's not as simple as it would have been pre-COVID, I think, really. So, but we need everybody to work together to try to help solve this, because part of it is a funding problem.
Yeah, and before, let me just answer Louise's question. I know you both have questions. So to Louise's point, you know, and pre-COVID, had this building been cost estimated, it would have been different, right? So we don't know what's going to happen a year and a half from now. We're guessing, right? We're guessing what's going to happen for the next six months. They're our best guess. That's, again, the reason why we want to look at alternates, because we don't want to build a building that doesn't suit the needs of Newport for the next 50, 80, 90, 100 years. We want to make sure that we're putting as much into it, and the best way to do it is going to be defining and understanding what those alternates are so that if the market starts changing, we could quickly just add those in at any time during the project. And again, we'll work with Gilbain to identify what that timeline might be, as well as whether we could afford it or not. Any other questions?
So when you put this 24% cost increase with the COVID escalation, so is that a, just sort of, you think it's going to be a year from now, a year and a half from now when we're buying stuff?
No.
So it still could be, you could be sitting here a year from now and say it's now 35%.
Yeah, no, what we're doing is making some assumptions. We know what it is now. In March of 2020, I was having conversations with individuals from the state of Rhode Island about a potential depression coming, right? March of 2021, we're talking about extreme price escalation that swung the opposite way within a year. We've seen escalation anywhere from 10 to 20 to 600% on certain products, right? We also, plywood went from $20 a sheet to $60 to $70. That is slowly coming down.
Is the supply chain leveling off?
It's leveling off. We believe that it will continue to level off, and I think that eventually the escalation and the leveling off will catch up. Will the prices come down? Probably not significantly. And, you know, Gilbain has done an extensive amount of estimating on this, and we're all taking our best guess right now because we just don't know, but we're also being conservative in that guess because we don't want to tell you it's 1% when it's really going to be 3 to 5%, which is pretty, pretty close to industry average.
And your estimates right now, we have additional escalation, correct, on top of, so we even count, we've already encumbered that number, that number with additional escalation.
All right, and again, if we don't see that escalation, that's what the alternates are for on bid day.
So my question was, you could mention going to RIDE and say, this will be have must-fit budget. What if that budget is increased by outside sources? And there's been some discussion, obviously, with states receiving some federal funding because of COVID-related issues. You know, can we get that? Are there other things? What kind of timeline is it that you have to get to RIDE with that in a must-be in this current budget? And can that timeline be pushed off six months or a year? How does that affect every, you know, all of you?
Well, I'll answer it a couple ways. So number one, we've already had those conversations about potential additional funding coming in, and they are willing to listen, and again, to make sure that we don't get any effect to our reimbursement, because that's the number one concern that we have. So we've had those ongoing conversations with them, and again, we will always keep them completely informed to the best of our ability at the time. As far as timelines, yes, there is an opportunity now, again, in the schematic design phase right now, to stop, pause, let's look at this, make sure we're doing this right, and moving ahead in the right direction, because this is going to make the difference between what happens as we move through. You're not going to have this opportunity once you start getting into design development and then construction. It just gets harder and harder the more the design goes on. So we want to get it right now, or as close to right now. Can you pause six months? Sure. Can you pause a year? Yes. But then you're also going to have that typical 3 to 5% escalation, so you're always trying to catch up. So you have to, you know, I guess make some decisions about, okay, we think we have a path forward, that path forward is design A, B, or C. Including that design is a bunch of alternates, some assumptions on what we think the escalation's going to be, and we're hoping that escalation is less than that, and that we can do it. Identifying other savings that we have in the budget. Start identifying other funding sources. And when I say funding, I know we keep talking about, you know, potentially all these other funders out there, but there's also grants out there. I mean, I'm working on a lot of projects right now that are caught up in this COVID escalation. We're looking at lighting grants. I mean, stuff that's out there that's available now, even for a new build school, where there's energy incentives out there as well. So it's not a matter of going out and looking for a fund or donation, it's going out and getting money that's available right now that we should be looking at anyways, regardless.
You know, is it possible to provide a list of all of the things that you could start the building with and then add, like I'm thinking of all the landscaping, all the fields, like all the parking lots, the lights for the parking lot, so to pull, because it would keep us moving forward and figuring, you know, it's a big risk, and I don't know if everybody's willing to take it, but, you know, it would keep us moving in a real forward manner, like, so.
Yeah, we always want to reduce risk but manage risk, right? So to your point, we need to start developing, and I think that's part of what this process is, is the development of that list and start having these conversations. You know, there is, there's a path forward. There's three options here that are a path forward right now. Can they be tweaked? Sure. Are there other opportunities to add stuff, delete stuff? Yeah, and that's part of the discussion here, and that's what I'm saying is that in the near future, though, we're going to have to start making some tough decisions in order to keep the project moving forward.
I guess, you know, thinking about what, you know, the more we can put in that building and the more program we can keep, and then, you know, blot on a, bring in a prayer, trying to get, you know, that extra money to finish the project, and hoping for state, you know, state help on this, because this is a universal problem, you know?
It is a universal problem across the board right now, and to your point, we want to build as much into that building, put it all into the building, build as big as we can, because that's where you're not going to get another opportunity to do that.
So maybe we'll go to the next slide. So again, bringing back that metric so that you can see the square footage in the bar and the dots at the top. There's two boxes that have been added to scenario B1 and B2, which is, represents the area of this building. In the first one, the box is empty because we wouldn't be doing anything in it, and in the next one, it's the possibility of zero to fully green. Are there any questions about this graphic? All right, let's go to the next. So I'm sure you saw in the packet that there is a floor plan. Mark has, I'm not even sure which version this is anymore, version, version this, which represents about 151,000 square feet. It can, it will morph into whichever of these scenarios we need it to be, but that represents where you saw before the bigger yellow footprint on the existing site. In scenario A, we would, you would end up with just that green building on site, everything else would be removed. And if you go to the next slide, please, you'll see that there's an extended connector, and we would either, we would keep the building, and we would either keep it as is, or we would renovate it in the other two scenarios. So just to give you an idea of how it might sit on the site so that you can understand its relationship to the keeping this building on site. If you think back to the site plan that we had before, where the NACTEC building sits now, that was where our bus parking and things used to be, so we do need to go back and restructure our site, which we certainly can do, and look at what the impact of keeping that building is to the site plan, because we still need the buses and the parking. So let's go to the next slide. No, so I was just going to say, these notes are new. These are new notes that we worked on today, and I can't read them from here either. So this is, this is starting to try and answer that question of, okay, in scenario A, if you look at the list of scenario A, what potentially did we see, working with the program, as the items that might not fit into the new building? So as Mark had designed it and had tried to, well, I'll let you talk about what you tried to think about.
So what I tried to do is take everything we learned in the previous process we've been going through and not throw the baby out with the bathwater, but take that and apply that to this new idea, this new concept. So fundamentally, where this was a four-story tower in the previous scheme, the 191 scheme, it was also about two structural bays longer. This is three stories and two structural bays come off of it, and I just went up this word. Yeah, I did. I coded.
What does that mean when you say structural bays?
Structural bays, so I took about 50 feet off of it. What I also did on this particular bar in the back is I looked at things that would make more sense to build new. You're not going to, the gym makes more sense to build new, as we've discovered and did some study on the existing gym. It makes sense to build the cafeteria new, the new food service, the kitchen to support the cafeteria, the media center. Because working with Jared and the team, we want that to work together as a system of spaces that's very important to the culture of the school. So we tried to maintain that culture, we've worked through with this new option. The black box theater is also something you're not going to stuff in this building. It has, it's a tall ceiling, it has a lot of technology that goes into a black box theater, so that has to happen. I looked at an option that the culinary and hospitality was over here, knowing it's undersized here, and it's about 5,400 square feet of space to do it light size. I think we're in a 3, 3,600 square feet range in the existing building. So with all of So with all the things that go around safety, around stoves and ovens and correct ventilation, it makes sense. What the scheme also did, looking for planning efficiency, with this option, I'm able to get the culinary next to the kitchen, next to the loading dock. So that serviceability is much easier in this particular option. This, this also compresses the footprint on the site. And there's other options we could talk about in the site as well. It still has a ninth grade academy, still has the right number of classrooms, the main office, the nurse, still at the same location that we fundamentally showed it before. So easy access in and out in the COVID environment. We want students to get out quickly so they're not impacting the rest of the school. The gym in this version, as an alternate, we have the, on the upper floor, we have the track. So I'm still continuing with that. PE lockers are on this level. The lobby space, you notice there's no courtyard here. The courtyard is moved to this portion over here between the two buildings. So instead of being completely 100% internalized, it's at the end of the building. So as you come in through the vestibule, you see through the lobby space, you see out through the courtyard. There's a culinary outdoor dining. Those are things we would still look to do. There's an opportunity out on the end here for an organic garden for the culinary kitchen as well. So they could actually make that part of the curriculum, could be part of the STEM curriculum as well. There are, what we, what I want you to understand is there is still a ton of opportunity to do wonderful things. The reason why we're talking about this building right now, what we're sitting in, is all about risk mitigation given the current environment. We could cut it here, and that's 151,000 square feet. And we'd have some decisions to make about what fills out the rest of this power from classrooms and sort of the CTE program spaces. In this version, I'm also showing an enclosed connector to get over to this building where we sit right now. With a renovation to that building, the character of that and this come together in one piece of architecture. We can reposition the inside with that extra money to create an environment that is sympathetic to both learning that would go in there and learning that would happen here. And it's not all CTE spaces in there. We would be mixing some of the, the basic curricular spaces. We'd be pushing them over. Visual arts could be over there for one thing, as a way to start to build the bridge between CTE and the basic core curriculum. So there are a lot of opportunities there that we would want to bring to you and have a discussion about. We can't make that decision on our own. We need you for that. So we'll go up, go up the floor. So on the second floor, you have the second floor of a tower. You know, this, this stair could be like the stereatorium. So you could, it's more than a stair where kids could sit. There's the upper level of the lobby, guidance still, the bridge between athletics or physical and, and the guidance office here. We still have the rest of the tower with special ed spaces, collapsing spaces, STEM labs starting to show up. Toilet's a little different, but still in a configuration that, like we talked about before. Black box theater opens to below. That cafeteria space is a open to below. So it's really kind of a dynamic space. It looks out to potentially a terrace that looks out over the field, that the field stay on that side. Core athletic support space, fitness room, some of these could switch around. You could imagine having the fitness room here with glass walls overlooking that cafeteria below. So you have the black box theater, you have fitness space, you have the media center. So you're, you're looking at a lot, a very dynamic space within the building. Sort of that hub, that cultural hub for the high school. And here we're showing that option of the track around.
What is that athletic space?
Those are team locker rooms. There's a trainer's room. There's uniform storage, laundry for that, all those kinds of spaces. Go up the floor. Thanks. On the third floor, again, some STEM labs, some more CTE program spaces, classroom spaces. Again, pretty generically labeled in this scheme because we would want to have that conversation with you as to what are the right opportunities for this scheme.
Mark, I have kind of a silly question. The spaces that show that have a slash thing though, what does that mean?
It's just the, so the overall size. So the way I plan things, just so you get it, the dotted line represents the structural grid. So even, so I'm telling Tony's group where there's going to be a structural line.
But it doesn't, it just mean, it doesn't mean anything like for us?
It's no impediment. It's just, it's just the graphic I use.
I thought so, but...
Otherwise, there's a lot of lines on it, but it allows me to know that's a module and a half of a structural base.
It's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
And I would say that Amy checked again today and made sure that we would have all the academic classroom space, special ed, ALP.
Special ed, ALP, academic classroom, ELL.
Science, STEM, all those things. So we, we're confident that are in the, in the new build. They are part, you can function as, as an academic community within this diagram.
But then you have a choice. You could choose to put ALP over and put something else in. So there's a whole series of choices that you would have to make with a scheme like this. Sorry.
Can you go back to the first one of the adjusted floor plans? And can you blow up those, those notes?
The notes, the list, yes.
We will send them out. We literally finished them as we were getting in cars. There you go. I just want to see what they say.
Yep. So again, in the, in the B1, think about things that we could put into this building without doing anything to it.
I thought that in B1, Mark was saying that the plan was to still move culinary to the new building.
He would. And we put it there as, hmm. We were thinking, hmm.
They might have been thinking a little differently. I was on the road.
We knew it was over there, but, but Amy kept saying, hmm.
And the things with the two asterisks are not included?
The, yes, correct. We just want to keep them in, in our mind that those two items take up space that would be somebody else's because they're here.
So the gentleman from culinary came tonight. And so he just, I see him shaking his head on a few things. Do you want to weigh in on why you don't want it moved?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I would. Um, so...
Can you hear him?
Just let him know for the...
You want to come up?
Matt, you just have to speak up, please.
Yeah. We want to hear from everyone.
Yes.
Afternoon, everybody. Good to see you. Welcome to my classroom. This right here is the culinary arts classroom, just about sitting as many students as I have in here at a time, about 25 kids at a time. I've got about 100 students total broken up into four pods. Right now, what you're sitting in is half of our colonial dining room setting and what we use currently as our classroom. Classroom space is big enough so that we can hold lectures, forums, tests, quizzes, and cover materials, of course, with the technology we have provided. Behind us is a dining room that seats 50 people. We can hold events in there and even open up this wall, this partition that sits in the center to sit as many as 100 for our alumni dinner, which we host every year. That, among other events, as we get pushed through COVID. Behind us is one of the most updated kitchens in Newport. I've been a chef here for about 10 years, bounced all around Castle Hill, 22 Bowens. I just started education a couple of years ago. And this facility is that state-of-the-art facility that we are trying to build. This is the kind of kitchen that kids need to have in order to go out into the field and experience the same exact setting as that. But this is still a classroom, not a service, right? We are not meant to be rotating people in and out of here every time. If we need to close to cover a lesson or bring materials in or try a catering opportunity out there in the field, we need to have that ability to have control over our own setting. If we are expected to be a cafe or dining setting, for instance, I know you're talking a lot about being in the new school. I feel like the expenditure from moving out into the main building is, is almost senseless when we have a state-of-the-art facility that we are sitting in at this moment. All of my equipment has been replaced within the last five years, thanks to Rob's proficiency with grants and things like that. I have a brand-new hotline, brand-new dishwasher, state-of-the-art pastry area, two brand-new walk-ins. Thank you, Mr. Main, for putting that money through last year. This is the setting that the kids need to be working in. And I would like to support today the B1 plan, with the exception of keeping culinary in this building, along with all of the other essential services, like automotive, like cosmetology, right? I feel like updating in the new academics, I'm 100% behind. Moving in to a place where we can culturally mix these two buildings, absolutely. But I feel that there are too many cons to moving out into this place and renovating this building as it may need some surface work. But I feel like this building will last us another 50 years, easy. I had some more specific things, but I won't go too in-depth. Just thank you all for your time today. I just want to support B1. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Matt, thank you. And if you want to send us that list, we'll certainly take a look at it. So I mean, that's the kind of input that we're going to be looking for. You know, as Mark was going through it, you know, one of the things I want to note is that we want to make sure we're designing this building for the next 50 years, for the change and learning. We don't want to just build a square box. If we've learned nothing else in COVID, we need classroom space. We need areas outside for the kids to learn. We need bigger spaces. So that's why we have to be sensitive to ultimately what this end design is going to be. A big square box is not going to serve the needs of Newport for the next 20, 50, 100 years.
And for the record, I did look at a big square box, and it's no more efficient than what I'm showing.
Daddy names up the...
We have talked in smaller groups about, you know, what could go in here. You could, you talked about visual arts, but maybe you put the sciences in here because it's a more dirty kind of thing, but it's much more academically oriented and so on. So those are all things that we're talking about to, what could go in here to integrate. Because, I mean, I do have to say this, Joe. We haven't really had quality talks with RIDE since we've come up with the number. We reached out to them, we asked for meeting with them, but if we weren't to renovate this building at all, like, would they give us all those incentive monies and so on? We just need to verify all that.
Yeah, we, we, we had an initial discussion and the answer was, yes, we'll work with you on that. We, we initially talked about the gym and this...
No, I know, but since if we don't do any renovation on this, we have to...
We, no, we have to, we have to refresh and have a follow-up meeting with them. But we need to go with them with a plan, right? So that's kind of where we're trying to move in that direction right now.
So the lists that we have on here, again, they were our suggestions of the items that you might think about in, in B2, I'm sorry, in B1. What kind of activities could we move in here, knowing that we weren't gutting and renovating? And we came up with a list of items that Amy looked at the program and the space and things that seemed like they could either stay because they're already here or come in. And there would still be some things that don't fit that we have on the do not include. It doesn't mean don't include, it means it didn't fit list. So we're still in a, in a bit of a deficit. If we were to renovate this building, we would alleviate that deficit because we would right-size the spaces and use the, the square footage that we have to its, its best, most optimum ability to fit your programs.
Firm idea of the, like, the shape of this building. I don't, we, like, I just, you know, we know that Rogers is in rough shape. That's why we're just, like...
This physical building?
This physical building? Yeah. But like with this building, you know, I know that part of what the cost increase came out of was, yeah, the building's, it's going to cost more for hazardous material when we demo and da-da-da-da. Like, if we went down the route of doing like a full reno or as much as like whatever in this building, what are we going to uncover? Do we have any idea of what's going to happen if we open the wall?
Yeah, we have a little bit better idea than probably we have next door just because it's a newer building. But certainly we would have to do a little bit more analysis if we're going to keep the building. I think it would certainly be prudent to do that.
And I think a key thing to remember, if we demo this, like get rid of it, wipe it off the site, you still have to abate it.
Right, you have to abate it regardless of what we do.
Yeah, no, my, my, wasn't from the perspective of the cost of abatement, but like, you know, given the cost of abatement and given that we're thinking...
Sort of unknowns, yeah.
Yeah, that it is in worse shape than we expected. How, like, you know, if we open things up, what are we going to find? And are we going to start maybe, what should we have?
Right.
I mean, structurally, looking at the building, it, it seems like it's in pretty good shape structurally, which would be my biggest concern.
Not more than 10 years ago, this building was renovated with a million five from the state.
We made it ADA compliant. It was an ADA compliant.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you make that bigger?
I'm getting good at this now.
My old eyes cannot see from here. I just want to make sure. So if I'm reading this correctly, slide it down a little, a little more, a little more. The B.1 NACTEC building as-is, those were the programs that would be held here. So I'm seeing how we're integrating. I still see like we've not moved away from where we were 50 years ago with keeping traditional academic community building and NACTEC is still back here.
Yeah, and that's, that would be a challenge because we want to do that, right? So we have to figure out how to bring pro...
And I'm like, everything on that list is NACTEC.
That's the as, that's because it's the as the building is. Like, what can we either keep or move in? As opposed to redo the whole thing and then we probably would do a, what do you call it, shuffle?
But the only way to do that is to be doing. So V1 is basically we get a brand-new building, but this stays with NACTEC.
It is, yes.
V2, you need to find more money. But in V2, you start making improvements, changes to this one. Joe, you said something at one point earlier. No, 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 it's a good thing. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. About like there's funding that we should be looking at. It kind of went in one ear and out the other, apparently. Can you touch on that again?
Yeah, specifically, one of the things I'm, I'm working on right now are lighting grants. So there's lighting grants out there that, you know, if our lighting package is $500,000, even for the new building, there's a grant that we could go and, and apply for. And if we could get any part of that, it's 100, 200, 300, or $500,000, it goes right back into the building. We pay for the lights through a grant and the rest of it goes back into the square footage of the building. So those are the kind of things we have to start getting creative with and looking at.
Is that something that, when you say that we need to start looking at, like, is that like the OPM team?
We. So Kyle will tell you, when I say we, I mean...
He means he.
He means you.
No, but that, that, there, we, I just had a conversation last Thursday through National Grid, an organization that works on these specific things through RIDE, actually. RIDE introduced the two of us together and, and it's about a new build. And in the new build, we're looking at buying the lighting for it. So there's no reason why I can't go back to that individual and say, hey, at Newport, we want to do this. And I'm willing and able to set up that meeting and start talking to them about that as well. On a separate note, how, what's the size of this current space versus what the new build would be for, for culinary arts?
It's undersized by what we would typically...
This is undersized now?
Not the classroom, but...
The kitchen.
When you add it all together, we'd be probably, I think, another 2,000 square feet above that. With a classroom, yeah.
We would spread out the kitchen though. We would give you more space in the kitchen.
You'd have more circulation around the kitchen to get more...
You wouldn't have to store these in your...
Yeah.
Would there be a kitchen, a classroom?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Dining.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So if, if this all went away, why couldn't we utilize that existing equipment? So this goes back to a question. So typically, we wouldn't be doing an FFNE analysis until months from now, maybe nine months from now. As part of this exercise, Kyle has already started getting the group together thinking, hey, we've got to start looking at what FFNE looks like now. Can we have any savings in those dollars to allocate to construction? So we've started thinking about that already. So the kitchen equipment is a perfect example. If they're only a couple of years old, why would we buy new kitchen equipment if we could take this and move it if we decide to go with the new build?
I think Jamie and I are the same. Like, I really almost need to see like a line item budget. Because it's hard to sit here and make decisions, like, even looking at like, oh, well, yes, it would be lovely to have an outdoor dining area, but we're also New England. And June is terrible. And how much money are we spending for what capacity to be used for 10 weeks? So it's like, I feel like I can't really make a decision until I know better where every... And I know I'm probably nitpicking because I like to get into the weeds, but in my job, it pays me money to suck up all this time here. I do regattas, so I have, you know, I know where every single penny of every regatta is going on everything. So sitting here being like, I'm like, yeah.
So what you're seeing and what we're representing is a concept, right?
Yeah.
So we wanted to figure out, is there a concept with design, like a world-class facility and risk mitigation that we could come up with that would allow us to move forward in some way? And this is what we could come up with, as much new as we can build. And reposition this as funds are available through good bid climate or additional funding. Without that, much harder decisions get made in getting alternates to get to this size of, I think this was 190, something gross, 40 and 193?
191.
191. So getting to that size without this asset is a much more complicated. We would tell you, we couldn't design 40 additional thousand square feet on that and be realistic about it. The market wouldn't support that.
Joe, for those of us who maybe want to get a little bit more in the weeds, would we be able to sit down with you?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we could, we could get in as long as everybody's okay with that. We could set up a separate...
I mean, the problem has been is to try to get to this has taken a lot of time and they don't have some of the specifics you want.
And so I just feel like there's, I, I could ask questions for longer than people in this room probably want to hear me ask questions. Joe, Joe knows. So, Joe, Joe knows, he knows.
I mean, I guess what I'm just going to say, we've tried to ask multiple minutes. It might be good to just have people send questions so that, because some of these we've asked, but they don't have the answers to yet, but we're trying to take it to the next step. We wanted to report to everybody where we are, and we are having a slight funding problem. But trying to, we're trying to also, can the design be more cost-effective, right? Can, there's many different things, and they're trying to make it as cost-effective as possible, but, yeah, we're asking. Same thing, what else can come out of the design, I mean, out of the program? Is there any other space that can come out of the program? Are there spaces that can be potentially reused for multiple things? You know, we've looked at it with Amy over there, she's done this a million times, and we're still trying to do more of that because it's size, it's design and design quality and design beauty, and then it's COVID escalation. Those are the three things that are causing the problem. COVID escalation is something that unless the numbers go down, it's hard to design, design around those things, so...
Yeah, and again, you want to design a building that is a good quality, right? Meets the needs, has glass in it, right? Because the glass is expensive, so we don't want to start reducing the glass to the point where we're in dark classrooms. Right? You want to have windows that open nowadays. I mean, there are certain things that we're changing, too. In the last two years, we've gone to closing classrooms and not opening windows. And now, we've learned, we need fresh air, we need to open windows, we need outside space for the kids to go out to, because it's a better learning environment anyways. So I mean, there's, there's studies, it, it, it does make for a better education for everybody. So those are the kind of things that we have to, you know, develop around. And, but we can certainly meet with a small group, because I don't want to make it a large group because then it'll turn into...
That's this.
Yeah. But we certainly could, if there's specific things you want to talk about. I mean, the structure is a structure, right? So, yeah, I'm not sure you want to talk about steel and what that's going to cost. So we're going to talk about specific things, if you could tell us what that is, and we'll get a small group together.
Unless Jeff Bezos wants to give us his steel, then I'll be happy to talk about that. But I think what would be helpful, too, is...
Does he go down to regattas?
No, he doesn't. But Mark Zuckerberg has a boat in Hawaii, a little sailboat. I think would be helpful, too, and I think this would come from Kathy or Colleen, would be really nice to know, not just the numbers of students who are in the NAC Tech, but those who actually graduate with certificates from RIDE. Because you can say the po, the program's popular. Well, is it popular because kids are trying it out for one year, and then we don't, they, they leave and we never see them? So are we, you know, putting all of our eggs in these popular programs, or are they really popular? Because I, I don't know, because I've never seen numbers of what the graduation rate and certificate rate of these programs are to see what's going on. So I just want to make sure I'm as well-informed as possible when I make a decision before I say, let's get rid of this, regret it, because it was, you know, it was popular. I'm like, well, no, I need the definition of popular.
Do you have any answers?
I will get those answers. I don't have them on me right now.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean right now, I mean, like, you know, in the next week, so that we could have, be informed. I don't, I don't certainly need you to pull it off here.
I got to hide them again.
We do have a schedule to talk about, and Ted actually has copies. If you want to give them the paper copy, so if they want to follow along.
But what we do, we'll do is, is we'll send out this updated presentation, right?
Yes, absolutely, yes. And there was just a few slides that got some new information on them. So Ted has a paper copy of this, if you want to follow along and scribble along with yourselves. So the, the top bar represents our original schedule. And so at the far end, the schematic design was scheduled to be done at the end of September, beginning of October. Clearly, we are almost at the end of October right now, so we're, we've moved past that, that bar. But as the schedule progressed, as we went through design development, which is our next phase, and then construction documents, and then construction began. Originally, the, or currently, I should say, because it hasn't been changed in any formal way yet, the new building would be done, new building construction would be done in the spring of 2024. That's the original schedule that we're currently working towards. There is still work to be done after that, to take these existing buildings down and establish the fields, so it's not the end of the whole project, but it was the end of the build time for new construction. We've taken a look at where we are, and that you certainly need some time to give us some feedback so that we can continue making some more changes and end up with a, a body of documents and cost estimates and all the other things that go with that to, to send to RIDE. With the expectation that we will get some direction in the next week or two, we are saying that we really need to move the schematic design schedule out to the end of the year, which basically just, we looked at it, we, we talked with Tony to get the impact of what does that mean to construction? Basically, we'll take everything and slide it so that the end of the building construction, again, new build, not necessarily what's going on in this building, because we aren't sure yet, would be in the summer of 2024. I believe that still gives you enough of a buffer to finish out whatever fields and things are being, still being done. December 2025 is the end of your five-year window that RIDE gives you to start and finish the entire project. So we are certainly still within that window by sliding these couple of months out. So I just wanted to let you know where we stand with that. But again, it is assuming that in the next week or two, we would get some direction on changing.
We're hoping to bring the group together next week, next Monday, just because it's a lot to absorb, and I'm sure you're going to go home and come back with questions, so we'll see how that works for everyone.
Yeah, I think that we want to set a date that's, that's realistic, too. So if there's other questions, if there's meetings that have to happen, if a week is too aggressive, then we should say two weeks. But we want to, the next time we meet, we want to be able to answer all the questions and move forward with a plan, if that's what the, the direction is going to be. So we think, our team thinks we could do it within the next week and be prepared to come back and meet again if, if that's what you desire.
Do you have some questions?
If there's any other questions, we're going to go back and... Yeah, we'll go back and investigate some of the questions that were asked already, and if there's anything new, we'll meet with a smaller group as well to talk about any specific items. And the goal is to come back and, and be able to answer all those questions next week.
So what Colleen was just saying is to have next week be like, people could submit questions, and then more questions could be asked, and then come together and try to, in two weeks, that following Monday, do an in-person and really have a decision by that point in time. What do people think about that?
What's that, what's that date?
November 1st.
November 1st.
1st.
That's the next week.
The day after Halloween.
So it would be the...
The following week.
No, no, it's not the week after that.
The following week.
8th.
November 8th.
That...
In-person.
Is that a holiday?
Halloween is this Sunday.
Okay.
So you would have a Zoom meeting on the 1st?
The day after Halloween on 1st, and then the in-person. Where is he, Halloween?
That's what I was thinking of, is what day, is that the 9th, or they...
That's the 8th, Monday, the 8th.
Right, that's, I was thinking of a holiday, I was trying to remember what day it was. Okay.
So the Q and A would be on November 1st, and the in-person meeting would be November 8th?
Both are Mondays, yes.
Yeah, and that would be, give everybody appropriate time to get questions and us to get answers and get some more information back.
Some good ideas, if you have any.
Yep.
Can we go get this out, so that they have the data and stuff? Something else we can... I should have some people send questions in ahead of time, so you could have some preparation and send them in through Kathy or through Kyle or...
Yeah, if there's any questions, you could send them through Kathy, or there's certainly, if anybody, everybody feels comfortable contacting us directly, I'm okay with that, as long as they keep everybody else copied.
So we're going to have the option with which the programs build into the building, something so much like what a meeting we had this afternoon.
We, we could work on, we will work on that, all right? Amy, we can work on...
I think that may help Jamie and Kendra.
Putting some names into spaces in this building, so you can understand a little better what what we propose could go in and what's still sitting outside.
So let's go clear, like, how are we getting emails, how are they going through? Are they sending them right to Kathy? Are we sending them to Joe?
They meant Kathy Nash, when they said that, yes.
And Kathy Nash will then forward them, always keeping you, Joe, and, and everybody on the new break?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, if you guys feed these two, we will get our information from them, so that it doesn't get lost in the weeds.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.